Welcome to our meeting in July and I just want to open by saying after this week, I'm very grateful for this flag and for what it stands for. It's that term year where we can really focus on our country. I've really appreciated that this week with my family. Just wanted to say that. I'm grateful to be here in July when we should have a little bit shorter meeting. Sorry I wasn't here last month, but I'm glad you survived. Hope we get better without you. Mr. Doolan, any changes that you see that we need to add to?
Unfortunately, my computer is still outdated. So I haven't got there, but I don't think so.
Well, let's go ahead and jump right into it and get started. Mr. Doolan, I wanted to show your report.
Yes, we'll be back to you. Mr. Chairman, ladies and the board, good evening. I'd like to start out with, this report came in in May, but I just got it today. It's from Delta Dental. You know, they do a lot of good, they do a lot of work for our students throughout the year. And this is from May, like I said. At Park, they saved families over $33,100 with numerous things. 112 students received oral hygiene education. 68 received a sealance with our molars. It's a plethora of things, I'll pass this around, that happened at Park. And it pioneered over $25,200 and the same, just a plethora of different services they offered for our students. A little bit about the car raffle. I don't know if you saw or not, but I had it parked down at Park, right there on the corner. So far, didn't yield any new business, but we'll see what happens. Right now, we're sitting at $14,650 with 183 supporters.
Can I ask you a question about?
Sure.
I saw it down there at Park and I was just trying to like think if I was someone who was, you know, passing through that didn't really know. Any chance we could get like the QR code on the car? So if someone wanted to just scan it right then, because they might not know a Wolverine. Like it says, find your Wolverine, but maybe they want to...
Well, it was in the passenger side window.
Oh, it's in the passenger side?
It was all weekend, yes ma'am.
Oh, okay. I could not see it.
It felt, well, I think the day was hanging, but it was still there. But let me see about that.
You know how you have all the good signage on the outside? I just thought, I don't know.
We did do that, we did do that at the high school for the middle conference we had. Those all have the QR code. Awesome. We generated business from that.
But you know, on the car specifically or just in the window?
Yeah, or like maybe on a sticker like on the window or something, just so it... I don't know, because all I could see was just, you know, when you're passing by. I could read the find your Wolverine, but I just couldn't see any, which I know how to find it. But I just was, you know, if it was someone who doesn't know, people, maybe it would help.
Yeah, thank you. On 22 July, from 5:30 to 8:00, at the auxiliary gym. It's a time of year for our free sports physicals. And the times are broken down by the initial of the last name of the students. And you can check the website, our digital website for more information. On 10 August, from 9:00 to 3:00, free haircuts will be offered at the Weezer Middle School Gym. Sponsored by Reuben from All-Star Barbershop. So 9:00 to 3:00, Weezer School District students, free haircuts. Today, we met with Dion Serman and our art protection over the track. Doing some different drawings, shot put area changing that, maybe changing the long jump area. But the bottom line, he said we should, in 10 days, be ready to go out for bidding. So that's a good match point. Another great thing that happened, the Glenn House will be occupied on 22 July. And then a new teacher and her family, not to exceed two years. You know our maintenance money, we talked about the tenure plan, this, that and the other? Well, tomorrow I have a training, or Wednesday I have a training. They'll train us how to upload all the information we need to a web-based program called MAPS. And once the items are identified and the tenure plan is discussed with the board, I will put together a few high-ticket items and go out to the public via survey so they can have input on what they'd like to see that money go towards. Some examples are new roofs, new pavement for parking lots, things of that nature. Just four, five or six different big items that they can weigh in on via a survey. And last but not least, the installation for the new PA system is going well at all schools. Right now, the speakers are going up at Pioneer. Now, when this is done, everybody in the school and outside will hear everything that's coming out from the office. The office will be able to call down via directly to the room and the room will be able to call via directly back to the office. So it's going to really increase our way of communicating throughout the day and even in the afternoon, early evening with our students on campus. It's really a great thing. That's all I have. Let me to your questions.
Sounds good?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Excited.
There, I have that too. I was trying to think of a level way to...
They're on the way.
Summer school, this last week is summer school. I can report on that.
Yeah, how was that going?
So it's going well. The first three weeks are kind of the weeding out as far as attendance and things like that. But the kids that are there, they're doing well and earning lots of credits. They have, this year, we have an opportunity for them to get a science credit in addition to the math and the language arts. And then we also have the history and government credits. So we added the science credit to that. And then seventh and eighth graders are getting their credits and we added social studies. So we got the four core credits in there. They've done a field trip, was it last week on the 27th? They did a field trip, the seventh and eighth graders did a field trip. They went and saw the mayor, met with the mayor and toured the city office. And then they toured the water plant, the water treatment plant. And then went back and did something at Weezer Classic Candy. They saw how the candy was made and got to enjoy lunch there. Doing lots of fun things.
Oh, you're gonna have to...
It depends on the class. Like our largest class, we have about 30 in English 1, 2. At the middle school, we have a total of 17 students. And then some classes just vary in size from that.
Thank you. We're holding up the administrators there. Appreciate it. All right, let's move into our consent agenda. Everybody get an opportunity to read through last month's meeting minutes. Any questions or can serve anything be changed? And our current meeting agenda looks good. Mr. Doolan, see, consider staff retirement and resignation.
Yes, sir. We'll discuss that during the session.
What about the other end of that?
Yes, sir. A letter, a letter report, yes, sir. And I've got some folks in the audience that were part of the committees that are going to recommend. So I'll tee it up and leave it up to them. Fourth grade position, I think Jessica's sitting with the, on the interview committee with Mrs. Hoberson. And they'd like to recommend Mrs. Jessica Malar. And she's also the one that's going to rent the house from us. So Jessica, you want to say anything about?
She's excited to be in this area. Her dad is the council high school ag teacher, so she's a local wanting to stay in this area. Hopefully a long-term either.
So again, a fourth grade position. Also, I sit in on this committee with Mrs. Price and Mrs. Clark. And they would like to recommend Ben Parsons for the vice principal of middle school position. Anything else on that?
I'm just super excited. He's jumping in and contributing to...
Okay. Stayed at the middle school. They've also reached out, interviewed Andrew as part of this as well, a sped physician. Betty Estenberg is her name. She's a TFA candidate. Anything you'd like to say about Betty?
She comes with experience in special ed. She worked with the transitions programs for quite a few years as a paraprofessional. So she brings some insight into that transitioning program at the high school level. And they're certain missing students for, she bring a lot of information and her personal thoughts.
Betty, what was last name?
Betty Estenberg, E.S.T.E.R.D.E.R.G. So again, staying at the middle school board. As you know, we have seventh grade math position open because that teacher went into the high school. And they, the team met and they would like to recommend Tristan Couts for seventh grade math position.
He is a Weezerite, I guess, is what we call. And just super excited. Has a lot of understanding about math and the content and the curriculum and progression.
Just got married?
Just got married. He's had a busy summer, yes. Graduated, got married and got a job, all within a couple of weeks.
It's good to have all three.
Yes.
So last but not least, a high school would like to recommend an English teacher by the name of Jade Wayne. Miss Jade Wayne. They interviewed her and Mr. Dickerson seems very pleased with what she had offered the team. So it's again, high school in English to fill that English position up. And that's all for recommendations.
I had the opportunity to talk to Jade. She knows my nephew. He gave her, he gave her my phone number and she called me to ask me demographics and some specifics about Weezer. Excited that after that short conversation, it was just interesting. Look forward to seeing her in the part. That's it? Five?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact.
Let us have our, have the financial report.
All right. In your packets, you'll find the reports that you're accustomed to see, but they have a lot considerably different numbers this time than what you've seen. You'll remember in the June board meeting, you approved an amended budget. So that first line item, the first column of numbers has been updated to reflect the amended budgeted amounts. This is definitely a preliminary picture of where our June 30th will end. This was prior to doing any year-end adjustments, including the accruals for payroll. So you'll see in the elementary area, we're at 79% of budget. Remember, we have 70% still coming in for payroll for the July and August time periods. And the same thing as you look at all of your school programs. We still have all of those salaries that will be booked as accruals prior to the auditor coming next week. So I don't have any line items that I am concerned about. You know, we really are tracking right where we need to be, total expense at 79%. Knowing that we've got 18 to 20% coming in as I finish those year-end accruals. And federal funds are tracking right as they were approved to track with the CFSDA and the IDEF patients. So don't have any concerns in those areas either. Mr. Doolan is doing a good job in spending our plant facilities money on upgrading our buildings. And we do still have a tiny bit of money left in our ESRA fund that will be spent in July. It's required to be spent by September 30th of this year and it will be gone in July of this year. So we have about $1,500 left in that account after we do the accruals. So don't expect any surprises there. And as I'm working through the audit entries, I'm not seeing anything that would cause me to bring to your attention for any concerns. So we're tracking right along with what you approved.
The capital assets, is that due to the end? Over by $1,100?
That was just, something came in after year-end and this is probably my learning process on the budgeting process here. I'm accustomed to capital assets being greater than $5,000. So those smaller items, I've always booked in either a minor equipment expense or a supply line item. And so there was an item that came in that was less than $5,000 that got charged to capital that I wasn't expecting after I amended the budget. So it's just a shift there in the numbers because you'll see that we do have, if we were more detailed in this particular, you would see that there are supply line funds available in both elementary and secondary.
We pay for the, we pay for the amount.
Forest.
Oh, the forest, that's right.
And that, and we check with written in July. And so we will not be showing this.
Thank you. Any questions? She loves to answer questions. With? Any AP questions that we have? Was there anything out of the ordinary when you moved through the AP?
No, just, two times at the end of the year, we're just trying to get some of the programs that have a little bit of extra money. We have to have that bill and spend right then. And so, right, we've funded the midnight oil a few times. So congratulations to her. She did a great job. And so I'm thinking that's, that's a good one.
That's the end of the consent agenda. If you have any questions or follow-up. In order to move on to our next part, I would like to accept a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as discussed. How's that get that?
Okay, motion to accept the consent agenda as it is discussed. Report has been made. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Did we have any comments? I didn't see any. So we'll move on from assisting comments and move right into the WA report.
I'm not sure.
Have the WA report. How many people in the WA, so appreciate it.
You're retired though, right?
Not officially, but...
That's the goal. She's just gonna sit there and smile.
Okay, well.
Well, I like your hat.
Let's move into our action items then. So we have, we're going to consider some policies as a second reading. And I just have to say before we do that, how nice it's been the last month to have to have a policy reading.
Oh, I miss that too, sir.
No, I know there's nothing, but it was really nice. I've heard that we have some amended policies that we are going to have coming our way. But it was really nice to take the month off. You don't know how hard, just the general public doesn't know how hard we've worked. It was a lot, it's been more than a year. Meetings twice a month. So it feels really good to be to the point where now we are just looking at upgrade, you know, amended policies. So, second reading of the 5,000. There's 15 policies in the 5,000 that we have a meeting. It's been over a month since we went through these. And honestly, I looked through these and I didn't remember any changes.
They're pretty straight.
These were pretty straight, pretty short. So I would entertain a motion to accept these policies.
Was there any where we had to like, there were multiple options, we had to pick one?
And I put those in there.
So those are all, yeah, they were perfect. Okay. Oh, yeah.
Motion to accept these as a second reading and we put into our policy reading.
Can I move that we accept these 15 policies in the 5,000s? As a second reading and then the policy number?
Motion is second to accept these policies as a second reading. Put in the actual policy meeting, all those in favor? Super. They were accepted. All right, Mr. Doolan, would you talk to us a little bit about the next?
Yes, sir, sure.
Title on our agenda that is increase of student meal prices.
Always like everything else, Mr. Bush, things are going up, including the state mandated meal prices for our students. And if you remember correctly, and I know you will, that even over 5%, we have to come to the board. And if you look at Pioneer and Park Lunch, it's going up 7% from 215 to 230. And middle school and high school is going up 6.4% from 2.35 to $2.50 for students lunches. Is this a second time or a third time?
No, I found minutes from last year's meeting that we had to increase prices last year as well. And so usually just reevaluate. There's a wonderful spreadsheet that Rachel did a great job of putting together that we actually calculated how much things cost us. And then it's a spreadsheet that the federal government puts together to say how much they will subsidize us. And then they come back with the mandated amount that we have to charge. And we'll read what even everything out to continue to get the modest pricing on the products that we purchase. Is that right? Holler up anytime.
You're awesome.
Good job, Mark. Thanks for your help. One log is going to the next one. Beginning of the school year. Any questions? Are you?
Well, it's something that's going to be it. I mean, it's not really an option. We have to do it.
This piece does require to be a public hearing since it's a price increase. So we're just asking the public again at this point if they have any complaints.
Thank you for that. No, I appreciate that reminder. I wasn't aware of that necessarily. There it is. So those of you that, you don't have a spreadsheet or maybe you have a sheet in front of you. But we were 2023, 24 school a year. So last school year at Park and Pioneer, we were charging $2.15. And at middle school and high school, we were charging $2.35. So the adjustment this year will be $2.30 to Park and Pioneer and $2.50 for the middle school and high school. Did I say that right? Okay, you were just, I... Any, does anybody have any? Is there any grants or any federal grants that are out there with our demographics of our community that would help?
They get subsidized by the federal government.
The lunch actually costs about $5.10 to prepare. And so the grant that we get is for the government to pay the other portion of that $2.50.
There are people though that do some fundraisers that have in the past, right? That have done some fundraisers to help with some student debt. Because even at 2.50, sometimes we do help people that can't pay. But that makes me damn term, Rachel. You never refuse kids.
No, I shouldn't. And this is the amount that somebody who can, for lack of a better term, afford to pay for lunch. This is what their prices paid. Rachel goes through a very significant application process to allow a lot of our students to eat for free. The last statistics I pulled at the end of the year, we had 338 kids that ate for free. And I believe we were at 319 that had reduced a price that they paid even lower than that $2 and change that we're targeting right now. So there are other programs out there. Our migrant students, our homeless students all eat for free just because of that status that they have. You know, if they don't have a home, it's doubtful that they have a meal. So they do receive free lunch. This is just the pricing that our students who don't qualify under any other umbrella pay.
Thank you.
A lot of times people need to fill out the application. If we can get them to fill out the application, they might actually qualify. And so that's another, we would appreciate it if they would fill them out because that does affect some of our Title I money.
$2.50 is a decent price as well. It's, it's helpful. It's helpful. Not going to go to McDonald's for $2.50.
Yeah, since, you know, the uptake in the quality of our food offerings as well.
It's much better, it's better food.
It is. So I nominate a motion to accept that. I'm going to accept a lunch increase.
Second up?
Motion is being seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm right. Disposable, disposable, disposal of some capital equipment, Mr. Doolan, would you talk to us about that?
Yes, sir. It's a truck sitting right out here. It's been out here for years. It's between a 1994 and a 97 Chevy. And our mechanic tells us that it would cost more to fix it than it's worth. So we're asking the board to give us permission to go out for sealed bid to try to just get it off on property. Kind of like we do with the bus.
We did have an outside, outside person evaluated and said that it was over $1,000. And so because of that, we have to go out for a seal bid. I'll advertise that.
The value of it's over $1,000?
Yeah, yeah, even with it not running.
Prices have gone up everywhere.
Yeah, exactly.
So do we have to have a minimum?
Well, we would ask for a minimum of $1,000 because that's what we create.
Well, we could do just a... We have a local mechanic who valued it at $2.75. The third-party person that we brought in valued it at $1,500. If you pull a Kelley Blue Book, it's worth anywhere from $327 up to $2,500. So I mean, it's not running, but the engine is clean. And it's got, there's two spares, but four of the tires on the ground are all flat. So, you know, it's just kind of a mix. I don't know that, I mean, it would be your call whether or not you want to establish a minimum. I have two really low, one at $2.50 and one at $3.27 would be the minimums. That, you know, Kelley Blue Book not ever having looked at it. And then a local mechanic who says I wouldn't give you more than $2.50 for it. And then another local mechanic who says you could part it out for $1,500 bucks. So you can establish a minimum.
You guys can establish the minimum.
Or you could just say get the best that we could get.
We just want someone to tow it away. We could do the highest bid and just have a sealed bid. And we don't have to put a minimum on that. We may only get the one for $2.50. I mean, that might be it.
So it just needs to go...
But we do have to advertise it.
I wonder if that would cost two weeks?
Goes in twice, it'll be in the newspaper two different times and then announce a bid opening after that second publication. There's also a public surplus website that we can put it on. See if there's any other interest in there for a truck. It's a 94 and it has 253,000 miles on it. And I think all 253,000 are on those things at the top here.
It's not a big move.
If we fill it up with fuel before we advertise it, it'll double value.
That's right.
Chairman, I wonder if the capital asset truck, not on the grid, for highest speed? Just do a highest speed?
Just a highest speed on a grid.
Yeah, they have to seal, they have to have a sealed bid. So we'll open it at a certain time and just have somebody do the highest bid. Somebody might bid $2.50 and somebody might bid $2.51.
Or they might buy a thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second up.
So we've had a motion to put it on, help the public bid with openable. It has been seconded, all those in favor? It has been made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Get rid of it.
Maybe this won't do better. It's in the runs.
Holy, holy. This is gonna be a great night. The next item on our agenda is actually an executive session. And after the executive session, we will come back and if we can take action, we will. But for those of you that are here to watch the whole meeting, after we have an executive session, we will just discuss if there's any need to have future items on the agenda. And we will have some communication, some cards and thank you cards and things like that. But that's where we're at for meeting. So, in order for us to have an executive session, we're gonna have to excuse...
We have to take a vote.
Oh, that's right. Because you can listen to the votes, all right, thank you.
I will make a motion that we want to executive session per item code 74-206B for a person on issue. Second up.
Okay, and once wrote, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Yes.
This price, yes. Sorry, Andrew.
It's okay.
Okay, we are in executive session and it's 6:02.
Welcome back. Would you have a need to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion for, from our executive session for the item code 74-206B to release Kathleen Kano from her 24-25 contract pending the hire of a senior.
I'll second it. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. And I'm not gonna try to read that word all those words, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Let's find our replacements.
Yes, sir.
If we can. All right. Our next...
Can we, if we do find a replacement, which lots of her future...
Please.
You guys are crying.
No, no crying.
We wish you, if my super...
Thank you, it's been a lifelong dream and I'm running out of time. So, when they called and offered, I just...
We'll miss you.
I will miss you guys too. It's been wonderful working for the Weezer School District. I've already loved by 18 years here.
It's great that somebody wants to go live in our city.
Yeah, it's not for everybody.
He has two of my children and I appreciate it.
Thank you, I enjoyed them very much.
They were awesome. Sorry, he's off.
Patient. We're good. It's tender moments. Anything that any of you as board members would like to see on our agenda for next meeting?
Well, I just have a question because I did the like conference of literacy course thing that we're supposed to do. And it talked about, I think, our literacy plan and how we should be having goals in by October or something like that. Is that something we need to be working on in our next meeting or do we work on that?
As part of the CIP.
Out of the meeting, continue as a...
And Lee McFarquhar is our academic achievement director and I think she will be working with you and so...
Okay, they will bring it to us and then we will... Okay, okay.
The plan is on five August, we'll take him to the administrative sunup site. We're gonna spend half the day through just that, CIP, talk about academic achievement, talk about our mission and vision. And I want to bring back to you how we're gonna increase decibels.
Okay, so that was another question because we did that half-day workshop at Sunnyside, but we never really came out with a new mission statement, vision and all of that. So you guys are gonna work on that as well.
We won't come out of, we won't come out of, August the 5th will not produce that, no. That's a lot more. If you want to change the mission and vision, that's a lot more.
Well, that lady that we met with, you know, it sounded like, maybe we need to, or we needed to make...
We just need to review it and if you feel like, but you're gonna have to do community. You're gonna have to, it's pretty intense. So, yes, if you want to, that's perfect, that's fine, that's up to you as a board. But you will have to have some community inputs, some other people in the pool.
I think, I, it's a great, it's a great agenda item. I think we need another work we can to further talk about because we have to have a 10-year plan and we're gonna use, we're gonna use the plan that Dr. Bauscher. He came and evaluated all our schools. So we're gonna use that in our 10-year plan so we can, we actually have some numbers that we can talk about. But absolutely, we need to get back to that. We've been coming into the end of the school year with everything. So I appreciate that because, yes, it needs to, we've been buried in policies. It needs to come back to forefront. So, on our agenda...
We're gonna be better off to do some, kind of another retreat.
Another retreat, working session.
And have something like that. And then also, as far as maybe a work session for these new policies to kind of establish a base for that. And then July 25th. That is the fourth Thursday, but I can't remember if that's a bad day for you. But we, we do need that. We need it because there were some that had to be in place by July 1st. So we need to get going on this.
They have to be in place by July 1st and we're gonna get them by July 25th.
Yes. Unless you guys want to meet sooner, I'm all about it.
Well, we're past July 1st.
I know, but we need to...
How much past when we go?
We, I'm telling you... I'm telling you, you're going to probably put some, and just do an immediate adoption.
Is there, is there gonna be, is there...
Well, there's some federal, there's some federal ones that you have to do.
So, future agenda items. We want to get back, we want to, I'm in agreement with what Kyla said about going back for a mission meeting. I would really like to schedule another working session where we can, we can talk about what we talked about. And that's goals and how to better the vision, vision. You know, bring everybody together.
When are you doing that thing?
Five August. Yeah, that was it, right?
I just said maybe we should do it after that to see what they come up with, what you guys...
August is gonna be a crazy month for us down here. It's gonna be crazy because September, we're all talking about...
So what I would recommend is that if we could, with us going into that on five August, that we bring you back things that will help us get to our mission and vision that currently gives. High stat scores, things of that nature.
Just, we need some goals, yeah, we need some, the ethic.
So let's, how do you feel about that? September, have a working session, talk about what we, remind ourselves what we talked about in our past working session. Bring up the goals and things that junior administrators come up with. But July 25th, we need to go over some policies.
That's the updated ones.
And then there's policies that we will have to review. Our annual policy review that we have, that we have to do. Back to policies.
Thursdays, Mr. Walker, Thursdays are bad for you, afternoons at least, or mornings. Remind me because I... Mornings are kind of bad, but I think, I think I can work it out.
I would leave it after, that week.
Work better. You're gonna be by the end of July for sure. You're gonna need to go inside in the dark for like months after that to get your body regulated. So the 25th would be Thursday, so would it be a problem just to do it at like 5:30? For you folks?
I just can do it after like... What works best for you?
When we get into the afternoon, it's gonna be better for me to do that.
Like after afternoons?
Does that, does that work for you?
Does that work for you, Kyla?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, policies, our favorite word, July 25th, 5:30.
Back to that same agenda, I don't...
Yes, please.
I just, I put in a note, just, and I've said this before, I just like it, so I can bring it up. And it's not for the August meeting because that's too soon, but either in September, continue hearing from students. Like, I really liked it when, I think it was the spring, a couple of years ago, like Mr. Gibson shot glass down and all that. I was like, show them though. Anyway, things like that. I appreciate hearing from our students and what they're doing and the publishing and whatnot.
We could probably add that to a board, like we did with the WEA, put the student section in there and work through who we want to hear from. But we definitely need to talk about who it is that we would like to hear from so that we can get them.
Cause we have our pioneer school kids and we have our middle school kids. Anyway, I just, I appreciate it. I think that first, that second weekend September might be homecoming, so maybe the in-home officers.
And where, our next meeting offsite is, somebody remind me, our next meeting offsite. Oh, that's at the school.
September at Park.
Because I was wondering if tonight was offsite because there had been so long since we were offsite that I wanted to...
We skimmed July because we wanted to do when school was back in session. So I did remember we went to September because we have the middle school.
That's at Park.
September's Park.
September Park. Though we have more...
December's middle school.
December, that's right. Is it? Okay. So September, so September when we are in session, the offsite is when we want to have. It would be great if high school students... We good?
Did we have private schools or private...
We did. Some park schools.
We actually get that.
We could have to...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, it's telling me it wants to restart, it's not gonna be... Okay, so there was, anything else on the calendar that? I don't know how we can do sale on our car or tickets.
I can get back in the football game and stuff. Well, I wonder, I wonder if once like fall sports started up, I'm hoping the coaches, you know, like soccer, volleyball, football. Hopefully, maybe they can make up like a flyer and send it home with every athlete or some, you know, something to have them go out, like if they, as if they were doing a fundraiser.
Maybe send an email out as well to at least parents.
I'm gonna get with Alex and get it pushed back to the top of the liniannews.com one more, one more strong drive.
I have a good email to parents, some people that, not everybody's on Facebook.
I can promise you that if the board members could purchase a ticket, they're easily set up.
I like, you can put it in your kid's name or something.
Could we, do we think like...
I didn't think that, I thought...
I don't think we can, I just did it in my husband's name. Yeah, I don't think we can.
Phone calls, the parent?
Your husband can... It would be a little weird.
Robo calls? Will you check with that?
You mean get a robo call? Get after it.
Yeah, why not? But use a real voice and not a robot voice.
Will you talk to...
I could use Kyla's voice.
I was thinking about...
Will you talk to... At least every school, but the schools that at least have athletics, that they could really, those fall sports, you know, have those coaches really push that, like, you know, make up, like I said, make up a flyer of some kind or something for their athletes to...
Yes, ma'am.
Jay, we've been going, going, anything else on the agendas? Sorry, we've got the August, August.
August, the newspaper in Ontario.
No, I can't. August in Ontario. Any other agenda items?
Call yourself.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on.
Steve, read the question then. Mosky doesn't care, so you don't have to sit next to him. Mr. Doolan, at school board, Kip and I would like to say thank you for the appreciation check. It was a nice surprise, have a great summer, everyone. Kip and Rhonda Forsting. Order trustees and superintendent Doolan, thank you so much for the unexpected and so appreciated bonus. With much gratitude, privately. Order trustees and Mr. Doolan, I would like to thank you for the kind gesture of appreciation check I received from the mail yesterday. Casey Romett. Colonel Doolan and school board, thank you very much for the unexpected money. It was greatly appreciated. Jerry and Sharon Fency. And I've received verbal thank yous from multiple people, people in the bus guard, people all around in the parts of the school. That's nice. Very appreciative. Yeah. I'm so glad you were able to do that and to promote certain type of...
Jay, thank you. That is the last item on your agenda.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned and there are goodies.
Goodies.
Yes.